The pastor was sitting in church saying, um, you know, that um, God has seen the black noise, male, no female.
Oh, it's Buffalo Jack?
Yeah. Let's roll.
All right.
Hey, how are you?
I'd like to call this regular town council meeting for April the tenth, uh, twenty twenty-five to order, please. It is seven P M. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance. If you would, join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, since I haven't arranged anyone, I guess I'm gonna do the invocation. If you would, please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, please guide us this evening as we make decisions for our county, for our state, for our citizens, for the, for this city of Stokesdale. We would appreciate your guidance in all of that. Please keep us all safe. Uh, we thank you for the blessings that you have provided to us. And we hope that we might better serve in, in, in the way you would like for us to. In your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mayor.
Certainly. Okay, review and adopt the agenda. I make a motion that we review and adopt the agenda. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Addition?
Yes? I would like to strike from the agenda. Item number eleven. Furthermore, I would also like to strike. Item number seventeen.
Any objection, any discussion?
Um, one other thing, was there, um, what, there's an announcement regarding the public hearings. I think this might be a good time.
I'll do it. I'll do it in just a minute. Mr. Foy, you sure we're on the seventeen? We got that covered some other way?
Uh. Robbie, this is the Asbells Kinnearly Engineering.
Yes.
We need one more bid, Tim, ideally.
Okay. Just making sure we wasn't confused.
No, not, not confused. I'm grateful that we have one bid in hand and, uh, just as a best practice, I think getting another one might be a good thing.
Got you.
Any further discussion? Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Any further discussion? Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. We have a.
We need to note that Mr. Rigsby's not here and we don't anticipate him showing up.
Very good.
I can confirm he's not sitting over here.
To.
Well. You know, the audio can't see, you know?
To, to Mr. Jones's point, uh, Mr. Rigsby is no, is not with us this evening and we do not anticipate him joining us. Um, public hearing item, if I may, the following public hearing items have been rescheduled to Monday, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, at seven P M. inside the Stokesdale Town Hall Council Chambers located at eighty-three twenty-five Angel Purdue Road, Stokesdale, North Carolina, twenty-seven, two-seven-three-five-seven. Conditional rezoning, uh, first item is conditional rezoning case twenty-five dash one dash P L B D dash zero-zero-one-oh-five. It is eight-oh-seven-oh North Highway sixty-eight North from C Z P D M, conditional zoning, planned unit development mixed, to C Z P D R, which is conditional zoning, planned unit development residential. That one is postponed till Monday, the twenty-first. The next one is a conditional rezoning case twenty-five oh-two P L B D zero-zero-one-oh-seven. It's eighty-two ninety-nine and eighty-two ninety-seven, uh, Z Z Walter Combs Road, uh, Way, from Agic Agricultural to H, or to C Z H I, that's conditional zoning, heavy industrial. And that too is postponed till the twenty-first. Do we have a public, uh, safety report from the fire department? Mr. Wagner, do you have anything?
Sorry, we may need to have a motion. I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
The motion to continue those two matters till the twenty-first.
I'm sorry. I thought that, I thought we just, okay, all right. I, I make a motion that these, uh, public hearings be moved to, uh, be postponed until April the twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Does that verbiage need to be continued until?
Well, they technically weren't opened.
We never opened them.
Yeah, yeah, they're being continued. They're not being adjourned. They were just, we're continuing those hearings until the, that day.
Okay.
Did I cover it with that motion?
Yeah, I, I think.
I need a second. Do I have a second?
You do? Second emotion.
Okay, I have a second on that. Is there any discussion?
What's the reason for this again?
Um, there was a defect in the, in the notice, um.
Our timing.
The, the timing, uh, the notice was not mailed to the adjacent property owners within a ten-day period acquired by the state.
So we're making this change to make sure we follow the law and.
Yes.
Do everything properly.
That's right.
Absolutely.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. Uh, Stokesdale Fire Department report. Do we have anything, Mr. Wagner?
I think we may have skipped agenda item number three.
Surely not. Let me jump back.
Too much coffee.
Oh, well.
Not enough, probably.
All right, um. I make a motion that we adopt the following minutes, the one for January ninth, twenty twenty-five, regular town council meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am aye. I make a motion that we adopt the minutes from January seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, special call town council meeting. Do I have a second?
You do.
Discussion? Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am aye. I make a motion that we adopt the, uh, minutes from March fourth, twenty twenty-five, special call town council meeting. This is a budget workshop. Do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Let me take a breath.
Okay.
I am aye.
I make a motion that we adopt the minutes from April first, twenty twenty-five, special call town council meeting, budget workshop. Do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion and a second. Do I, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be voting nay because I didn't attend that meeting.
Understand.
I'm comfortable voting for him, so that'll be.
Understand.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly. Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Do it, Jimmy.
Mr. Landrith?
I hate to vote for defective minutes.
For what now?
Defective minutes.
Defective, defective minutes?
I, I'm not gonna.
Please go into it. I'd like to know. What, what, what do you question?
I just hate to vote for minutes when we don't all vote for them.
Oh, minutes we don't all vote for?
I'm not going there again. I went there before, so.
Okay. What is your vote?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
I'm nay. With respect to council and staff and the town attorney and all citizens gathered, I'm nay.
Thank you. I am aye. Uh, now we'll move on to, uh, public safety reports. Mr. Wagner, do you have Stokesdale Fire Department?
I do.
District.
Okay, so this is from an email that I received, uh, earlier today from Mr. Todd Galton, the chief of the Stokesdale Fire District. Uh, he said, I'm sending you out the numbers for last month, March. Uh, there were fifty-three medical calls, sixteen fire calls, twenty-nine other, ninety-eight calls in total. And that's the end of the Stokesdale Fire District report.
Do you have a report for the Guilford County Sheriff's Office?
I do. So this was a report that was emailed to me earlier in the month from Sergeant Ryan Seals at the Guilford County Sheriff's Office. For the month of March, the sheriff's office responded to one hundred and thirty-eight calls for service in Stokesdale, which resulted in twelve case reports. Of note, on March the fourth, deputies arrested Wyatt Miller, thirty-two, during a suspicious vehicle call at the Sitgo at seven-nine-one-five N C sixty-eight North. During the encounter, Miller was found in possession of ten-point-four grams of fentanyl, zero-point-six grams of methamphetamine, and was found to be driving while impaired. He was charged with two counts of felony trafficking of heroin, felony possession of a Schedule One controlled substance, possession of drug paraphernalia, and D W I. On March the twentieth, deputies took a report of vandalism at Town Park in which two vehicles were doing donuts in the parking lots and damaged the asphalt. The case remains under investigation. On March the twenty-fifth, deputies took a theft report of construction materials stolen from a home under construction at the seventy-five-hundred block of Dovefield Road. Calls by type, this is the call of type upon initial dispatch. Call nature often has changed after further investigation or upon deputy arrival. Two burglary of a residence, seventeen alarm, one indecent exposure, eight domestic, two warrant, one drug, two fraud, one fire, one missing person, one noise violation, one accident, fifty other, twenty suspicious, two stolen property, two vandalism, one theft, and twenty-six traffic. And that is all for the Guilford County Sheriff's Office report.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, sir.
You've got a lot of other going on.
Lot of other?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I know.
A lot of that.
I don't quite know what those others are.
We need to see if we can do something about that other.
Yeah.
I don't know what that is, but.
Administrative reports, Mr. Wagner?
Uh, yes, I'll, um, I'll read over it. I'll, I'll keep it brief. I included it in anybody, everybody's packet, so if you have any questions about any of the items, feel free to, to reach out, but I'll start off with the water system report. Uh, this is provided by Mrs. Hunzucker. Uh, there were eleven water meters installed, sixteen water meters are in stock, nine applications for transfer of service and water meters are in, eight water meters and applications on hold for builders, fifteen work orders, forty-four eight-one-ones, eight-hundred-and-seventy-two water bills mailed out, and twelve reservations or rentals. Any questions for the water report?
Okay.
Okay, and for the admin report?
Any questions, any comments?
For the administrative report, I'll just touch that the Stokesdale Athletic Field Lighting Project is completed. Um, that project was, was, uh, come together finally. Uh, Mr. Overby of Renault Electric has done an exceptional job of getting the equipment installed. Duke Energy got the power to that equipment and, uh, Sky Logics has, uh, taught us how to use the remote control system, so it's up and running and running well. So we've, we've turned those lights on for, uh, Stokesdale Parks and Rec a number of times now and, and we haven't had any issues, so. Um, another big update is we have finally made the switch here at Town Hall from Spectrum Enterprise over to A T and T. So the fiber optic cable has been installed, the telephones are in, internet's on, and everything from Spectrum has been shipped back to them. So that has, that has made its way.
We haven't had any password changes or anything. We're able to switch off.
Yep, right.
So we just have a different internet provider.
Correct, yep.
Do we have any, do we have any working television monitors in the house?
We do not have television, so they did not.
Let me explain, I think, if, I think we, I think we need a television monitor working. I don't think we need to go through them to do it. My suggestion would be we look into something like Roku.
Okay.
Uh, it's an inexpensive thing. All we have to have is the internet and we can get local news and, you know, if Mr. Landrith wants to sit and watch the sports from Uruguay or whatever, I, you know.
They can do it.
I have no idea, but he'll be able to do that.
I do have good news for you. So the television that's in the conference room, right here behind me, is a smart television. So it already has internet access.
Then you don't, yeah, then, then that, that would give it, all we have to do is turn it on, should be.
That's right.
So we don't need the Roku. And that's where I would suggest we put it, is the conference room. We don't need one anywhere else.
Yep, it works.
That's just a suggestion. I'm not asking for a vote. Is there any objection to it?
To Roku?
To having a working television in the, in the building. With A T and T, all of them worked, which was what our bill had.
Uh, okay, okay, no.
I thought you were gonna wanna buy some TVs.
Want to buy, buy some TVs?
I figured you would.
I got some I'll sell you.
Well, I will say, I, I, I did have a, a good meeting with Brian Cox from Audio and Light, and he checked into the projector and that television, and he told me that that television was on its way out, and I did not think it was gonna work for this meeting. It took me and Priscilla to get it on. I've never taken two people to get a television on, but it's, it's on its last leg, so after it finally warmed up, it turned on. So, but other than that, uh, you're correct. We don't have television that works as far as cable goes, but we do.
Are we, are we shopping for another one by chance?
I have asked him for a proposal.
Who, uh, the?
For a TV?
The audio people? The monitor's going on this one?
Well, I understand that, but I mean.
I think we could probably get.
Well, can't we talk to Walmart?
So you certainly can. Uh, he would like to give you a proposal so that you can see what the cost would be versus what it would be, uh, to pick up at a big box store and.
Oh, oh, yeah.
It might be cheap.
We're not obligated to go through him in any way.
You're not, you're not.
Yeah, I'll be at Sam's in the morning.
That's fine, understood. I think his idea, what he has given, they don't sell televisions, they sell monitors. So.
You need to vote a cancel first, Mr. Mayor.
No, we do not. No, we do not. No, we do not.
His last administration, they did all those updates they need.
No, we, we do not, but if you want one, if you want one, we'll let you, we'll let you put a Roku in the, in the financial office there. Uh, at your own expense, of course. Is there any further discussion?
And the other item I'll add is just a, just a reminder that, uh, although we are already closed on Fridays, just know that we'll be closing observance a Good Friday holiday on April the eighteenth. So Town Hall will be closed and staff will not be here on that Friday. And that's, that's it. If there's any questions, feel free to send them my way, otherwise.
Let me ask you, when we have a holiday like that, does that bump the day off to anywhere, or is it just the holiday is the day off?
The holiday is the day off, except for in the case of, of Mr. Winfrey, um, Mason, since he is capped at sixty-four hours and he typically takes a day off at the end of a holiday.
Okay, very good.
If it lands on a Friday, since he's not here on Fridays anyways. So for instance, that week, he'll take Monday off since he'll be getting paid for Friday.
Did we, uh, do we have anything on the planning board, or did I cover that earlier with the public hearings?
I'll be glad to just to, to.
Hit the high spots?
Hit the high spots for you. So for the planning board report, this was put together by Mr. Winfrey. Uh, again, those, uh, conditional rezonings, uh, both were held at the public hearing, uh, that was held by the planning board back on, um, March the twenty-seventh. Uh, they had made their recommendation of approval for both of those and, and letters had been sent to council, uh, giving you those updates. And I'll just add that, um, the next regular meeting of the planning board, which was scheduled for April the twenty-fourth at seven o'clock, has been canceled due to a lack of, of business to appear before the board, so that means their next meeting won't be until May the twenty-second.
Anything else?
That's it for the planning board.
Okay, uh, property committee, I have, uh, of note that, uh, we have started on the bulletin board down in the park, uh, thanks to Mr. Stevenson. Uh, he's begun measurements and things like that. I mentioned to a couple of the council members that I think we ought to repair it, so he's in the work, he's in the process of getting some pricing and things like that, but, uh, other than that, I'm not aware of anything, other than the lights are working, I understand, so.
Correct, they are. They're working.
Are we good? And thanks to Mr. Jones, and, and I'll have to admit, my supervision, um, we've made some repairs in the park over the last, uh, week.
Yeah.
Uh, we were very fortunate that, uh, he was kind enough to provide the equipment to do the work, and, and he was also kind enough to provide the muscle to do the work. I, I just, all I had to do was provide the brain power. Um, the only thing that I was missing was a shovel to lean on, but we'll take care of that next time.
Spent all my life, folks.
Uh, that covers the town park improvement meeting as well.
Well, actually.
Unless you have something, I'm sorry.
I do, and that's okay, yeah. So, uh, Mr. Stevenson couldn't be here, um, for the meeting tonight. I think it's the first one he's missed in quite some time, but for good reason. Uh, so he did send me an email. Um, he said, sorry, I will not be at the town council meeting tonight. I've attached my report. And he's asked me to read his report here, and so I'll, I'll go over it. It's just six short items. Number one is the soccer field lighting. As I had reported, those lights, um, are installed, the project is complete, and the lights have been used several times over the past two weeks. Uh, number two, we continue to evaluate various methods, policies, procedures, and equipment to enhance the safety and security of our park. Number three, we continue to evaluate options for restricting parking at the basketball and pickleball courts with the desire to provide a safe and attractive entrance to the town park. Number four, we are evaluating necessary repairs and improvements to the large bulletin board, as Mayor Crawford had, had noted, in front of the concession stand at the town park. Number five, we are evaluating repairs and improvements to the sign at the entrance of the Stokesdale Town Park at Martin's Meadows. That's the sign at Angel Purdue Road. And number six, there are currently, uh, there are not currently any scheduled meetings of the committee. Special called meetings will be scheduled at. And that's all.
Very good.
Thank you, Robbie.
Yes.
Financial reports, Ms. Thacker? By the way, welcome, Ms. Stokes. I didn't greet you when you came in. Welcome.
Thank you, good to be here.
Always good to see you.
All right, we'll start with the general fund. I'll just briefly go over the high, the high parts, the high points. Okay, in the SEDARs, we have a total of two million, eight-hundred-one-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and seventy-one cent. Um, our total bank accounts that include our ARPA funds and Fidelity Bank checking and, uh, petty cash is three million, two-hundred-seven-thousand, nine-hundred-seventy-five dollars and twelve cent. The total interest for the month of March was nine-thousand, two-hundred-four dollars and fourteen cent. Our year-to-date interest earned in the general fund is eighty-thousand, six-hundred-sixty-three dollars and seventy-one cent. Our, um, accounts receivables totaled twelve-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and ten cent. This includes our, uh, shared overhead expense that is reimbursed to us from the Water Enterprise account, and that for the month of March is eleven-thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-one dollars and eighty-one cent. It also includes our sales tax receivable and also the payroll reimbursement from the Water Enterprise account. Our total count, accounts payable was two-thousand, five-hundred-ninety-seven dollars and fifty-six cent. And I will move over to the Water Enterprise account. And in the Water Enterprise account, our SEDARs total one million, six-hundred-one-thousand, two-hundred-seventy-three dollars and fourteen cent. Our total current assets that include our checking account, our, um, capital reserve fund, and the North Carolina Capital Management Trust Fund as well, totaled two-million, four-hundred-fifty-thousand, two-hundred-ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cent. Our interest that we received for the month of March in the Water Enterprise account was six-thousand, nine-hundred-eight dollars and ninety-seven cent. For a year-to-date total of interest earned, forty-nine-thousand, seven-hundred, nine-hundred, hmm, seven-hundred-ninety-seven dollars and fifty-seven cent. Our total capacity fees that we received for the month of March was six-thousand dollars. Our accounts receivable that include munch, March billing is twenty-two-thousand, nine-hundred-seventy-one dollars and sixty-seven cent. There are zero bills ninety days past due, active and inactive. Our sales tax refund that is due back to the Water Enterprise account is one-thousand, three-hundred-forty-six dollars and fifty-nine cent. The total accounts payable for the Water Enterprise account is forty-three-thousand, eight-hundred-eighty dollars and eighty-four cent. This also includes the shared overhead reimbursement that is due back to the general fund and the payroll. Um, and that's all that I have for the Water Enterprise account. Any questions?
Okay. Do we have any, uh, do we have any public comments? If you would, please leave, limit them to three minutes, if at all possible. Any public comments? Sheriff, would you like to speak at this point, or, any, anytime? You're welcome, you're welcome to now?
Gentlemen, my name's Sam Page. I'm from Rockingham County. Um, of course, you know that I'm running for senate in twenty-sixth district, representing Rockingham and Guilford County. Uh, I was just reading over a bill that just came out recently, and it's House Bill eight-on-one, and it's a study of paper towns. What it applies to is towns that were, that were incorporated, I think, after nineteen ninety-five, so it does not apply to your town, but I just thought that was of interest 'cause it's in the near vicinity here. Uh, but the legislature's looking to see, a study to see if those towns are providing adequate services and stuff like that, and if they're not, what action should they take? So I just thought that was just information in your area. But again, I'm glad to be here. I'm good here. I'm coming into a lot of business and budget meetings. I'm learning a lot. So I appreciate you, and I'm listening to good government and progress. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Sheriff. Would anyone else like to speak? Good, bad, or indifferent? We're gonna move on to old business. Consideration of an amendment to the town of Stokesdale Current Solid Waste and Recycling Co-, uh, Collection, Transportation and Disposal Processing Agreement. Mr. Foy, I believe you have this?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it's that time again, time to, uh, to renew, uh, or move forward with the new trash and waste pickup, uh, provider. Back three years ago, we moved from Republic to G F L. Uh, for the most part, I think things with G F L, uh, have been pretty good. The rates have been good. I believe the service has been good. I'm not saying there hasn't been a hiccup here and there. Certainly there has. But, uh, with the town expiring, Jimmy and I met with Mr. Steve Cobb, uh, back on February fourteenth, uh, to discuss potentially extending that contract, amending that contract and extending it and the terms associated with such. And as always, uh, Jimmy Landrith, I think, negotiated a great deal for Stokesdale. So I'm, the, the terms of the amendment are in your packet. I'll go ahead and introduce the discussion with a motion. I'd like to make a motion to amend the contract with G F L for weekly waste and recycle pickup in the town of Stokesdale from July first, twenty twenty-five until July first, twenty thirty. With this amendment, G F L will not be eligible to increase the cost of services to town of Stokesdale customers until July first, twenty twenty-six. At that time, the maximum annual price increase may not exceed four percent. That's down from the five percent that's currently in the contract today. So I do believe that certainly with the, with the, uh, rapid inflation we've seen, I, I think those measures not to have a price increase, you know, until July first, twenty twenty-six, coupled with a ceiling, uh, that's twenty percent lower than what that ceiling is in the existing contract today. I, I think that's a, it's a good, good contract. Uh, I will be voting for it. Furthermore, you know, I mentioned we have had some hiccups. Uh, we addressed that with Mr. Cobb. Their G F L truck number eight-three-four-zero-two-one, uh, has experienced intermittent fluid leaks in Stokesdale. Uh, we have asked for that truck not to return to Stokesdale, and to the issue has been corrected, and the tru, and the truck has performed, uh, without recurring leaks for at least a month. So that was in discussion, uh, with Jimmy and I had. We also asked him to follow that up and send that to us in writing, and he has done so, so, uh.
I, I read this, it's on the timeout list. Did they come out and clean up any spills behind it, any places where it was necessary? I wouldn't have any problem getting them to do that, right?
No problem getting them to do that, Tim. They certainly came out, you know, with a pressure washer. Unfortunately, with the, you know, hydraulic fluid, I don't think you're gonna be as successful as desired when it comes to getting, uh, that kind of fluid out.
Well, I'm, I'm just making sure that they didn't leave behind, uh, puddles of fluid and, with, without them being addressed, so you, you're talking about removing stains. I'm just making sure the, the puddles was up.
To, to the best of my knowledge, the puddles certainly, and far as far as stain remover, the effort was made, unfortunately.
I just know we went through a lot of drama with the previous, uh, waste disposal provider, and I, I appreciate you.
I'll remember.
That's kinda like putting sealant down. You put a little patch of sealants with that same thing as hydraulic fluid. And, you know, you know what it's gonna look like, I mean, you'd have to seal the whole driveway. Robbie? How many complaints have we had for non-pickup?
For non-pickup? Yep. Maybe one or two, and, and that was from the same person. It's because there was a power line, uh, that was too low at the entrance of their property, and G F L couldn't get to it. I'll, I'll actually say the, uh, the, the second time, um, G F L contacted us, told us that they couldn't get to that residence on account of the low hanging line, and then shortly after, the property owner called and said that they had not picked up their garbage, so G F L beat them to the punch on that one. Um, and it was, I reached out to Duke Energy, got them to raise a line, and it hasn't been a problem since. That's the only two.
Out of a long time.
Out of a long time.
I mean, we used to have with the other company.
You tell me, because that, that was before me.
Every week. The only problem we, the only, the only issue we've had was, uh, leaks with these guys, a few leaks. And they've tried to, uh, they've tried to do something about it, and they actually took the truck out of service as far as from here for a while. So I mean, they've, um, they give the town good service, real good service. Uh, you're gonna spring a leak once in a while, but, you know, it's a matter if you get it fixed and take care of it, and they, I think they've done an excellent job.
I believe, I believe they've also reported that that truck has been repaired and it's been operating for.
They put it in here now. Yeah, they took it out for a while.
Right.
We asked them to, and, you know, so. That's good.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
My, my, I mean, you know, we've been in a high inflationary period, and it doesn't show any signs of abating, if, if you ask me, but what do I know? My only reservation is this being for five years. You know, hopefully that'll be good for us, but I would want to make sure that this contract has been thoroughly reviewed by our very own Mr. Winfrey.
Yes, I did review the amendment that's in front of you.
And, and checked it back with the contract. You feel good about it?
I think so. I think the town's got protections, and there's other protections in the contract itself. For if there's a breach, either side can terminate for cause in the contract. So I think we've got the town protected in that regard.
Anything else?
This way the citizens can have a good idea of what they're going to pay.
Well, if you take a look at it, I did.
Sometime.
Currently, we're paying 22.75 per month, which works out to 68.25 a quarter. With a 4% increase, that 22.75 goes to 23.66. That's less than a dollar increase.
Well, there is no increase.
That's in '26. This is in '26. In '27, it goes to 24.61.
No, it don't necessarily. Still, we still have to have the inflation.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. That's the maximum.
That's the maximum.
I'm sorry. You are correct. I stand corrected. But there's the maximum. The, the, what we're facing at the worst of it is if it, if it were to jump every year at 4% in '29, it would still be 26.61.
Is there an index for?
So I just, can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Bureau of Labor Statistics.
The figures you're reading, the monthly figures, those, those are from '22. So they have increased by 5% annually up until now. So we're actually paying more than that now.
I'm sorry. Well, let's adjust that real quick.
It, it's a small amount. Well, I know it.
Well, the one, the 5% increase, the 5% increase took it to 23.89, which in 2026 would take it to 24.84. Again, that's less than a dollar increase. That's a week. And I can go on and on.
It's a good deal.
It is a good deal. I'm, I'm.
The numbers aren't right, but it's a good deal.
Okay. Well, 25.83 would be 27.
Those numbers not in the contract that you're talking about anyway. Those are numbers that you did.
I based it off of the, off of the existing.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that has nothing to do with the contract, what you.
Right. No, I'm not. No, I'm, no, but what I stated is not in stone.
But in other words, we don't need to re-figure that.
No. I'll second the motion.
The, the fees can adjust up based on the Bureau of Labor Statistics Urban Consumers Water, Sewer, and Trash Index.
That's correct.
There's any provision for them to adjust down should we have deflation?
I remember asking that question, and I remember him dancing around it a little bit without getting a direct answer. But that's certainly the implication. Should we see a price increase when the CPI is decreased? I think we have.
I mean, if it decreased, we would have a, we would have an argument.
That, that's right, because it's supposed to.
You ever seen it decrease? It may. It could.
Not many. It's not a good sign when it does. Well, it's kind of volatile after. I thought I'd ask the question.
We currently pay $25.14 a month.
I wouldn't want to haul it off for that.
That's pretty good, too.
You had a second?
25.14 a week.
All right. You had a second?
The monthly is $60.
That's quarterly.
That's what I said. I'm, oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Monthly versus quarterly. Yes.
Do you second it?
The mayor's second it.
That is, that is monthly, the figure that Derek quoted.
Okay.
Mayor seconded.
All right.
I have a motion and I have a second. Do I have any further discussion? Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. Our next item. This moves into new business, discussion of proposed updates of the Town of Stokesdale Development Ordinance. Mr. Foye, I believe you have this one as well.
Yes, sir. Just as a reminder, we're currently working with the Piedmont Triad Regional Council to develop, to update our developmental ordinance, ensure everything's aligned with General Statute 160D. I believe where we were last time we discussed is Mr. Winfrey. It was going to take a, a review from that from a legal standpoint. And certainly beyond that, there's nothing to discuss tonight. But I think as we look forward in the next couple of months, we, we do need to be prepared for this discussion. Robbie, thanks to Robbie, he printed out a book of all the updates. And I'll be honest, I haven't started reviewing it yet, but I will. And to be prepared for a discussion that would occur, May-June timeframe. So I would, you know, would, would look to, to my colleagues for thoughts on, you know, being ready to discuss, you know, call it in May or June. And also I'd look to Mr. Winfrey to see if anything, if you, if you've discovered or need some more time.
Well, and that has not been on my front burner since our last meeting. But in addition to the 160D changes we had talked about, there were also some constitutional recent cases that have come down from the Supreme Court that we, I think your direction to me then was go ahead and incorporate whatever we need to, to make us compliant in those regards. So, so my plan is, first off, I thought I would pass it by Mr. Chu. Let him have a chance to review the ordinances from our, from our planning point of view. And if we can make it happen to get, get it on the, on the May agenda for the Planning Board. So the Planning Board would first have a public hearing to consider these changes and hear public input. And then based on whatever they recommend, it would come to this board afterward. So if I can make that happen, and I haven't talked to the chairman of the Planning Board yet about this to see if what their agenda looks like for May.
So a clarifying statement. What you're speaking of, putting it in front of the Planning Board now, is that just the constitutional changes or the 160D related?
I was going, I was going to put them all in one packet and just, just say, these are the.
We don't, we don't need to put it before the Planning Board yet. I mean, we need, we need to get, we need to get all this and look at it ourselves and then decide what direction. You know, you was going to work, look at a couple of different ordinances. You talked about constitutionality of it. We need to get that before, so we can review it.
Okay. It, it may be a better venue to review is a standalone special call meeting because this, it's part of a regularly scheduled town council meeting. It's going to be a lengthy agenda item, I think, to say the least. But I'm, I'm open to, to any way we decide to scan this cap, but, you know.
Well, I mean, for us individually to be able to look at it ourselves.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
With some time before we set a meeting up and then.
Yeah.
And then, then make a decision in council, when we want to set the meeting up for the, you know, have the Planning Board seated up.
Right.
So, so you'd like to review it before it even goes to the Planning Board? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I think we need to look at it.
Yeah. Because the Planning Board will have a hearing at some point, make a recommendation to this board, and then, then the council would have another public hearing. And you can, you can not make any changes. You can make some changes, all some or none of the changes. You'd be able to adopt at that point.
Now, I'm not talking about the, the council going through it or anything as a council. I mean, for each individual to be able to get this with time to, to read it and look, and then come in, ask council, and decide how we want to proceed. I'm not talking about us get together and start talking about it. Until, you know.
Right.
We'll, we'll let the Planning Board do the job. But we need to get our hands on it and look at it because we maybe want to make, you know, make some changes or submit some changes or something.
And I agree with you, Jimmy. You know, we, when we talked about this last, it was either last meeting or the meeting before, we acknowledged that we need a long runway for this procedurally and, you know, just because this is, it's going to be a lot to bite off. And I put this on the agenda tonight just to keep it in front of us. Certainly didn't want to slap it on the agenda with, you know, let's, let's go ahead and tackle it tonight. We're not ready.
Yeah, yeah.
But at some point in time, that would need to happen and need to happen reasonably soon, within the next two months.
Yeah. Well, I'm kind of waiting on, on Mr. Winfrey's.
Right.
And then, then, you know, start looking at it. Because, you know, I started looking at it before. And then there was changes.
Right.
I don't want to look at it and then have more changes. I want to get it together and then.
We're, now, we're, we're in a good place, but like I say, I just want to.
Hey, we're moving forward.
Worth mentioning.
Okay, very good.
We'll press on.
All right.
I'll move it up a little.
Item number 13, discussion of the May 6th, 2025, special call town council meeting for the budget workshop. This one's mine. After our last workshop, we pretty well concluded the budget. We, there had been, there's been an update that Ms. Thacker has provided to us. And my, my motion would be that we forego the April budget workshop meeting.
So the next, Robbie, when's the next workshop scheduled?
Did I say April? I'm sorry. May.
Correct.
May the 6th. May. I would, I would, my motion is that we forego the May workshop meeting.
And let's set a, let's set a time for our public hearing for the budget.
Okay.
So, so would that be in the regularly scheduled June?
You need a separate motion?
You don't have to, but it's cleaner.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead and do yours.
Okay, I have that first motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, I will add during this discussion time, I think Ms. Thacker's got something to add about the budget, so.
I did notice on the agenda tonight, and if I'm speaking out of line, stop me. There is an agenda item about the lawn care contract. I would need to tweak one item, which would be, I have budgeted for a certain amount in, for the 25-26 budget under the lawn care. And if that item were to be approved, then I just would need to move some money from the contingency category and move it up to the lawn care. That's the only change I would need to make if that item is approved.
Now, we've already approved the lawn care. This is just an extension, a two-year extension we're talking about tonight. The lawn care's already been approved with a 2.5% increase.
Okay.
So it's already been done. So if that need to be, if that needs to be done, it already needs to be done.
Okay.
In other words, it should be reflected in the numbers you already have.
The money is in the budget. It's just a tight budget.
I got you.
I would just like to just open it up a little bit more.
That's, that's fine.
It's covering, it's kind of, it's covering Hunter and the other. However, I would just.
Pat it a little bit. You never know what the mayor might want.
How much money do we have in contingency?
$5,200.
Okay, I mean, we.
I was just going to maybe move, you know, a couple thousand from contingency into the lawn care.
I'm okay with that.
That's all I was going to do. Okay. I just wanted to let that be known.
Thank you, Kim.
We have a motion and a, and a second.
Mayor, if I may ask a question, I, I wish I had a good reason as to why I wasn't at the last budget meeting. Had a couple of work calls that particular afternoon and got distracted. It just totally slipped my mind. I went, I, you know. Feel bad for you guys, working your fingers to the bone and I'm not here. But how many citizens attended that meeting? Anybody know? Anybody remember? About like tonight or was it?
No, we had, we had probably. Oh, the budget meeting?
The budget meeting.
Oh, no, very few. I don't know. I don't recall.
Well, the only reason I mention it is, you know, if y'all are happy with it, maybe I'm happy with it. But should we possibly, you know, keep the meeting scheduled, just because we may have some citizens that want to attend? You know, I, I don't know what to do. You know, like tonight, we have four citizens in the, in the audience. And I don't know if that means the rest of the town is satisfied with what we do or the rest of the town's given up on us. I never, I never know. But I just didn't want anybody to come up at a later date and say, you know, you didn't, you didn't have enough of a, of public opportunity for public input with the budget. So I just wanted to bring that point up, whatever y'all think, I'm good with. No citizens are contacting me with, you know, inquiries or requests or, you know, it's quite.
Well, the thing about it is, if we had requests, when we do the next budget meeting, I mean, we've pretty much already got the budget figured now. So I don't know what good that would do. How we would start shuffling things around and how we'd even agree to it. I'm all for citizens. I mean, y'all know that I'm, you know, taught before and after. And we had these meetings. We had plenty of time for council and.
There just doesn't seem to be a lot of citizen interest right at the moment to accommodate. Is that what?
Well, they're interested in us saving the money and not taking, picking their pockets like the rest of the governments do.
Well.
And we're not, and we're not.
My constituents, when I, when I interface with them, they're, they're pretty much all about just leave me alone and stay out of my pocket.
Huh. Imagine that.
And that's what we do.
Best we can. I think, I think, I think we can handle this with an agenda item on our, on our May regular meeting, on our May council meeting, that one of the agenda items would be that we have finalized the, the budget.
That's what I was hoping.
And that, that on that final council meeting, you know.
When we, so when we set those meetings up, if everybody will remember, we said we'd set these up if needed. And we.
Right, exactly.
And we, you know, we finished it up.
So, so the issue at hand is to forego the May meeting because we do have a budget that's, we, we were satisfied with. So maybe we go ahead and vote on that, and then we can discuss when we hold the public hearing, either May or June, at the regular meeting to adopt the budget.
Okay. Mr. Wagner, you're going to have to help me. Did I not have some vote on this at this point? Mr. Foye voted for.
Did we vote?
No.
No, there isn't.
We have not voted on this motion.
Did we ever get a second?
Not yet.
I, I second, no, I didn't second the motion. I made the motion.
You made the motion. I'll second the motion.
Okay, now we have a second, and it's called a question.
All right. Lost my place. Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. The next item is consideration, excuse me.
So, so from there, that brings us to a point where we have a budget that I believe all of council is, is satisfied with. And I think we need to provide direction to Robbie because he's going to need to advertise a public hearing on when to, you know, when we do this. Historically, we've done this at the regularly scheduled June meeting. And certainly don't oppose to that. We're ready to actually do it early. I think our first year on this council, we, we, it was passed on June 30th with Jimmy and I voting no for that budget, but.
Last day.
Yeah. But.
It was your fault.
But so, so what is council's thoughts about, you know, do, are y'all ready in May? I'm ready in May.
Yeah, I don't mind doing it early in case, in case we have some type of a hiccup.
I think we're ready in May, but to Mr. Jones's point, in case we should have a citizen that wants to step up, there's no reason they can't bring this to our attention in the May meeting.
During the public hearing would be a wonderful time.
Yeah, I mean, that's what you have a public hearing for.
So you want a separate public hearing for just the budget?
I don't. The law does.
I got you.
We have to have the public hearing.
Yeah, do it.
I guess I'm just letting council know I ain't hearing nothing out there and I, you know, asking if y'all are. And if you're not, then I, I guess we're good.
All right. Direction for Mr. Wagner? Mr. Ford, you have a suggestion on the date of the public hearing?
If, if council's comfortable moving forward at the May meeting, I think Robbie needs to go ahead and, and go ahead and initiate the advertising for the public hearing. And certainly this will be on the, the May agenda.
What does staff think?
I mean, I think the budget's great. And I think if we can go ahead and get it done, let's roll on with it.
Okay.
Get it done.
I'm good with that, too.
What, what's the date in May of the town council meeting?
8th.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, correct.
And, and just to maybe a point of clarification point. If for some reason, you know, during the May public hearing or, or meeting, we have the option, of course, to, I believe we do, Chuck, I'm looking at you, to continue that public hearing until June, if, you know.
Right.
Don't need to get this passed until June 30th.
That's right. I mean, so typically what happens is the, the finance officer will present the budget at some point. It has to sit for at least 10 days for you to look at. So, so one possibility would be to present the budget at the May meeting. And then you could adopt it. The law says you have to adopt it no later than June 30th or June 30th, you know, at the latest. And so, so if a, if a document presented, and then it would, it would be on public record. Anybody wanted to come out and look at it during the month of May, after the May meeting could do so. And then you could have a public hearing at the June meeting.
I like that idea.
I mean, that's fine, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chuck. It's a good suggestion. Robbie?
I agree, and I'm glad that Chuck brought that up. That is a big step in the process. Kim has to formally give you the, the.
Present.
Presented proposal budget. That's why I've been very careful every time we do this. We don't call it a final.
That's why I've been very careful every time we do this, we don't call it a final proposal, we call it a up-to-date proposal. Uh, we don't want to misconstrue that, so once she gives that to you, there's a ten-day period, and then, and of course, that public hearing can happen after that ten-day notice. And we, we, we have to note, uh, to the public the day that she gives this budget to you all.
Well, this, this sounds like a great suggestion. I'm glad we have the discussion. Uh, let's proceed as Chuck has suggested.
Is it appropriate to, to make the public hearing date the same as our regular town council meeting date, or do we have to have a separate date?
No, that's.
Oh, okay, all right, I just want to be sure I was, I was on the same page.
And just to be clear, you can make changes to the budget at any time, so even after the public hearing is held, you may, you may get input from the public that says you should change X, Y, and Z, and you can do that.
We can change it during the ten year, a ten-day period.
Up till June thirtieth.
Or you can change it to hearing. I mean, you can, when the, the hearing before you adopt it.
But during the period when it's open for ten days, it can be changed.
Yeah, it can be, it can be changed, there may not be a meeting, if there's a meeting in the, in the.
Well, in a meeting.
That's right.
If you change it, do you have to have another ten-day period?
No, no, this has to be available for, and you wouldn't, as a practical matter, you're only gonna change it either at the May meeting or the June meeting. I mean, I'm assuming, unless you call a special meeting to, to amend the budget.
Well, I hope we're not gonna change it. We've got, what, what'd you say, five thousand to play with now, three?
Well, that'll change slightly with landscaping.
That's what I say.
Okay.
So I mean, it's, we don't have a whole lot to change. I mean, if we had a, if we had a hundred thousand dollars sitting out there, you know, to spend, I would say different, but we don't.
Somebody may want to make a donation, and we'll, we'll make a change to accommodate it.
That's, that's the whole thing. I mean, we'll be having it, we'll be talking about this two, at two more meetings, so. Believe me, I, I want the public to be able to.
Okay.
Involve with everything. I mean, I, you know.
I make a motion that we have our public hearing for the budget on May the eighth at our regular town council meeting. I don't need to make that motion. May eighth at our regular town council meeting.
I, I thought we was gonna have it in June.
We want to have it in June.
Yeah, I think you want.
We want to have the final one in June. Okay. What are we proposing for May? Just, in May would be the budget presentation.
Budget presentation.
She would, that's right, she would formally present it to you guys at the May eighth meeting.
I withdraw that motion.
Sounds like a, it's, we're clear.
Yeah, a motion. You just need to put it on the agenda, don't you? I mean, you don't even need a.
You don't need a motion tonight if you don't want, that's fine.
Just put it on the agenda, we'll present the budget, and then we'll put it on the agenda for the, uh.
They, and they did, that passed, so we're good.
We did, so we're, we're good.
You got that day off.
That's right.
Okay, we're good then.
Wonderful, okay. Uh, consideration of payment of, uh, of payment authorization for remaining balance of emergency water system repair. Mr. Foye, I believe you have this.
I think we skipped item number fourteen.
Consideration of request, I'm sorry, forgive me. Uh, item number fourteen, consideration of requests to temporarily close a portion of the Stokesdale Street. That is also, Mr. Foye.
Yes, I'm gonna start it out with a motion. I'm gonna make a motion that the town of Stokesdale support the closure of Stokesdale Street in front of Stokesdale Christian Church from Highway one fifty-eight to eighty-six twenty-four Stokesdale Street on April twenty-sixth between the hours of six AM and two PM to allow for the safe and successful eleventh annual Stokesdale Christian Church Customer Cars at Church Car Show.
No second. Everybody wants a second, okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Foye?
Aye.
Mr. Landriss.
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am aye. Okay, moving right along. Number, item number fifteen now. Consideration of payment of auth- payment authorization for remaining balance of emergency water system repair. Mr. Foye?
Yes, sir. On February twenty-eighth, uh, the town had a, we had a major water main break on Highway one fifty-eight, uh, right in front of the nursing home. Uh, the cost to repair the water main was twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and two cents. Uh, to the best of my knowledge, this was the second largest, uh, kind of water, uh, main break in, in, in the history of the town, so it, it really was quite a big deal. And, and given the complexity and scope of the repair, including highway traffic control, uh, emergency hour response, the overtime hours and the weekend work, uh, associated with this, I also believe, uh, to be a very reasonable rate. It's, uh, I want to give a special, uh, thank you to Michael Hodges and A and D Enterprises for a job well done. Uh, in addition, just give a shout out to Tim Jones, uh, Robbie Wagner, Gary McChusett, and, uh, Chris Southern of the Fire District for the, uh, extra, uh, hands and, and communication, uh, those guys played a, a, a big role in this too for the town. It's town policy that any water system emergency repair exceeding twenty-five thousand dollars requires a vote of cancel. Uh, being that this repair was north of the figure, we need to vote. I make a motion to authorize the dispersment in the full amount of twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and two cents to A and D Enterprises for the repair of the water main rupture that occurred on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
I second the motion. Discussion.
And just to be clear, my understanding is twenty-five thousand's are being paid.
That, that is correct. Per, per policy, uh, the, uh, an emergency repair dispersment can be made up to twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, if the, one, the money's in the budget, and two, with the approval of two council members, and both of those criteria have been met.
We're authorizing the, the payment of eight hundred and fourteen dollars and two cents, which is the balance, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And it is, um, in the budget under category twelve thousand four, the same account for the emergency.
Okay.
Um, under the Water Enterprise account.
We have a motion and a second. We have discussion?
Wait a minute, so we're voting on eight hundred and fourteen dollars and two cents?
We've already paid the twenty-five.
I know, so we're not voting on the twenty-five thousand.
That's correct.
Eight hundred and fourteen.
Eight hundred and fourteen.
Right.
It, yeah.
It's just wording, but yeah.
And it's not been paid.
The four, the four, eighteen has not been paid.
Now, i- if the, if the, if council wanted to ratify the payment of the twenty-five thousand's are even made, you can also do that.
We, we need to do that in single motions.
Made pursuant.
Uh, I think my motion to, to authorize the dispersment in the full amount of twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fourteen would cover that. The, the twenty-five is also covered via town policy.
Well, that's right.
As long as that criteria is met, so.
We're not gonna pay it twice.
I'm gonna keep, yeah.
No.
I'm, I'm gonna keep my motion as is, if there's a second.
And that gives the whole, that gives the entire council or gives the council president a chance to vote on, on that. Again, my, my second stands. Do we have any further discussion? Mr. Foye?
Uh, could I request about a three, five-minute break?
Absolutely, we'll take a break.
All right, thank you.
Robbie? I only saw two places.
There are, so, yeah, well, technically. You sign that one, okay. Uh, that one, there's two places. But only one so far. Technically, they've got to approve the amendment, but the contracts are the very, very last paid. There were, yeah, no, it's just two, there's, so that's an amendment and a contract.
You need to sign something.
Yep, I got you.
Yeah, I had your text, I was making sure we were right on that. It's my dad's birthday, four-ten, I always remember that.
They get a portrait, John.
Oh, look at that, looks like a. Oh, that's right, that's right. Right here, this as well. This, and so this one, it needs to be signed, if it doesn't pass, I'll trash it, I'll trash it. But the, this is the contract. Yep, this is our contract with, uh, excellence that was approved at the last meeting, and then this is the amendment that is for consideration tonight. And that is the amendment to the GFL contract. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Get some water.
Thank you.
You got some water?
I'm good, I'm good. If you'll see, check out the noise machine they have right there.
Oh. Oh, is that?
Yeah. That's for you, Chuck. The white noise machine. So, uh, those are kind of more common in meetings. I, I work with a recording. I don't think it.
The meeting.
We have a discussion point. Out of GCR. Do we have enough left in there?
I hope so. No, I don't have anything to do with.
I think we should get the Call of Silence, remember that from the G S M R? Remember the G S M R, they had the Call of Silence?
Yeah.
Couldn't do it anymore. Say what? So I looked at, I turned ten, I thought that was G M R. I think it's shrunk over. Remember there? Oh, that seems, issues with the years. Right. About half, half of this was. Did you tell her that was easement? It was, I don't know if it'd be. There was like four years between these two. Makes you feel sorry. Absolutely. Carry on. Yeah, but.
So sometimes that works, but I've never had.
You guys good? Regular town council meeting, call back to order. Next item is consideration of an amendment of, to construct, to construction contract for Ellisboro Road Water.
No, no, Mayor.
Have I missed another one?
We, we didn't finish up our motion, voting on our motion for A and D Enterprises.
I'm sorry, you are, you are absolutely right.
No problem, too much coffee. Uh, I was just speaking to my colleague, Mr. Landriss, and I, you know, had expressed some concern to him about a few days ago about something I had on my mind here, so. My intent is to abstain from this vote. And the reason for that, I've been here with a break in the middle, this is my eighth year, and I have concerns about our pre-audit certification processes. But my vote to abstain is because my name goes on these audits. And, uh, I want everything to be by the numbers, I don't, Mr. Foye, one of us is wrong, and if it's me, I'll apologize, but, you know, we kind of have this tug-of-war sometimes when he says, you, if it's in the budget, you can spend it. And, and it's gotta be in the budget to be spent, but in my contention is, since we're mayor, council, former government, there has to be an authorization from council in order to spend the money. We are not a council manager-form of government wherein the town manager would have the authority to spend out of the budget. So anyhow, uh, Jimmy Landriss encouraged me to explain myself, and that's what I'm doing here, I don't want to make nobody mad, I'm, I'm just wanna, uh, try to encourage us to always be, uh, be sure we're following all the statutes, covering all our bases, uh, because, uh, you know, apparently it takes five to do this, plus a town finance officer, plus town clerk, plus a town attorney, it's not always easy. Lot of moving parts, but anyhow, that's the reason for my vote, there's, there's nothing more than that. I'm very happy with A and D Enterprises and, uh, I, I, I really, uh, I think if we couldn't do any better than our two public utility contractors, we have Yates Construction and A and D Enterprises. Uh, Michael Hodges responded that day to that leak. Uh, Yates couldn't make a crew available to us, and lord, I don't know what we'd have done without them. You know, we, we were in a mess, we had a big leak under one fifty-eight, so. So, a- as the mayor pointed out, this, the, this, this is a big bill, but big chunk of it's for traffic control and, uh, is in a kind of a dangerous place. I, I don't, I don't fault them for the way they did it or anything, I don't want anybody hurt, but I, I would say at the price that we got, given everything he had to do on the weekend, some after-hours work, uh, you know, I, I, I think it was, uh, you know, a bargain, we couldn't have done any better with anybody else, so. My, my issue here is procedural, not, not with the money to A and D Enterprises.
Okay, so I want to ask you something then. My name goes on the audit too.
Yeah.
I abstain from it, then how do they get paid?
Well, if you abstain, your vote's yes.
Yeah, well, well, that's right, you're right.
Let's all abstain.
I don't have any other opportunity here, I've just explained my rationale. No, I understand, but what should we be, what, what I'm, what I'm concerned about then, if that's a concern, what should we have done? What should we be doing? I mean, I don't know any other way to do it. So, that, I mean, that's.
On those two options. And Ms. Thacker did respond.
What was the date of that email?
That email was dated March the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Could you please read the names of the people that I sent that email to?
I'd be glad to, yes. So this is from Derek Foy to myself, Robbie Lee Wagner, the second, to Kimberly Thacker, to the Water Department, which is Mrs. Hunsucker's email, to Chuck Winfrey, to Tim Jones, to Jimmy Landrith, to Mike Crawford, and to Jim Rigsby.
And what was the date of the leak?
The date of the leak?
February twenty-eighth.
February twenty-eighth?
It happened on a Thursday night. It was between the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth. That's correct. It happened. I got the call Friday morning.
Started on Thursday and was really leaking Friday.
Correct.
I started getting calls at O'Dark Hundred on Friday morning from the Fire Department. And then citizens following.
The twenty-eighth was on a Thursday.
Though unconventional to ask staff to read email, I do thank you for doing that in policy in the middle of a meeting. That was in response to concerns about the legality or following procedure around here. Tim, do you have any further comments about those concerns?
I'd just like to point out, Mr. Foy, that the leak occurred on two twenty-eight, twenty-five. The authorization to pay the pre-audit certification authorization occurred on March the nineteenth, twenty-five. That's a considerable number of days after the fact. I do understand that no matter what, the water system repair had to be made. Again, I cannot stress how much I appreciate A and D Enterprises and Michael Hodges for getting this done. I think the price is fair. That's not the issue. The issue is being sure that we meet the pre-audit certification requirements the state of North Carolina puts on us. I bring this up over and over again. And I'm just, I don't want to spend any more time on it tonight. I can't, I can't. You know, you're not going to change my mind based on what I know in my experience and all the professionals I've talked to here over these many years.
I'm not in interest in trying to change your mind. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand. You know, because when you say that your name's on the audit, my name's on the audit too. And everybody else's is. Mr. Winfrey, do you feel like we did the requirements for a pre-audit certification?
Well, my understanding was there was more than twenty-eight thousand, twenty-five thousand eight hundred in the budget for, to cover these kind of repairs.
Right. I'm going to base my vote on what you say and what you say, Ms. Thacker.
The budget authorizes me to pay this.
Right. And if, you know, and if for some reason somebody else thinks they're not, then I don't want to, I don't want to see what it is because I'll vote for it. But, you know, I rely on you two guys, you're all the experts.
And I will just add, Ms. Thacker and I were just speaking about this. So as far as the dates go, the leak did occur on the twenty-seventh of February. Counsel was made aware of that leak the day of by myself. The invoice for this was received on Tuesday, March eighteenth. And that invoice was sent to counsel by myself on Tuesday, March eighteenth. So as soon as the repair happened, I let counsel know, I'm sorry, as soon as the leak happened, I let counsel know. As soon as the repair happened, I let counsel know. And as soon as you receive the invoice, I let.
Well, I'll be voting yes because you say the pre-audit certification is proper. And you say the same thing, and you're the attorney. Okay? So, I mean, it's scary when somebody says, you know, it's the first time I tell you that I don't want to be in trouble. I can't afford to be paying money out.
Well, I'm too pretty to go to jail, so.
As long as I can't be held responsible for it, and that's what Mr. Winfrey says, then I certainly am all for getting the balance of eight hundred and fourteen dollars and two cents to A and D Enterprises. And I will stress again, my issue has nothing to do with this. It's a functional thing. It has nothing to do with this water leak or this bill.
We know that, Tim, and we appreciate, I can't say we, I know that and I appreciate the things you do with the water system. When you bring that up, I don't, I'm not, I did not try to discount what you're saying. I'm just trying to clarify it with our experts that we pay to try to make the proper vote because they do have to get paid. That's, so don't, don't take it like I was trying to, just trying to find out.
Mr. Wagner, where do we stand on this vote? Right now, we, Mr. Foy has made a motion to authorize the disbursement, the payment for the full price of the invoice, that being twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and two cent. Mayor Crawford, you seconded that motion, and now we just are waiting on the.
The vote.
The minutes really reflect that the twenty-five has already been paid, just to make sure everybody and anybody that looks at this understands we're not paying it twice.
And I'd also like Ms. Thacker and Mr. Winfrey's comments about the pre-audit certification in the minutes, too.
Okay. I will go back and listen to the tape and include those in the minutes.
I would like the town policy written in the minutes. I would like it noted that you requested and read the policy.
I will thoroughly listen to the.
I would like that email that I sent to council in the minutes.
Okay. I can make that happen.
Well, what should I do in response? Ask to have the thirteen pages of the general statute that cover?
If you wish.
I surrender, but just. If you want to, you know, I would suggest you revisit the general statute.
We don't want you to surrender.
I think I've made my concerns known repeatedly. I feel good about it. I hope Mr. Winfrey's right. I can't go to jail, so I'm good.
I've made my rebuttal clear.
You don't care if the rest of us go to jail, do you?
Gentlemen, let's move along. Want to take the vote, Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
I'm aye.
And I am aye. Okay, now we're moving on to item number sixteen, consideration of an amendment to construction contract for Ellisboro Road water line extension. Mr. Foy, you too have this.
I did. The good news is the Ellisboro water line extension is complete. And the results from the first hydrant testing on Cornelius Court, it's my understanding we're very positive in terms of water pressure. The bad news is the contractor ran into unexpected costs due to adjustments that had been made as a result of hitting unmarked utility lines and the necessity of the installation of two water valves that were not specced out by Kinnon Engineering's bid documents or engineered specs. The total overage cost was twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars. The updated cost of the project is now two hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The construction cost roughly came out to a hundred and five dollars per foot. Still believe the citizens, water customers, and any other stakeholder received good value in the work being done, even at this modified cost. This project was still twenty-seven percent lower than the lowest competing bid. The project is being paid for with tax dollars that were granted to the town from Guilford County, who are granted these funds from the federal government via the American Rescue Plan. In your package, you have a cost breakdown of the incremental cost associated with these two drivers that led to the incremental cost. The payment of the incremental amount has not been paid. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to amend the contract with Yates Construction to authorize an additional twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars to cover the cost as highlighted on the document titled, document from Yates Construction titled Payment Application Details for Project Ellisboro Road Water Line Extension, Stokesdale, invoice two seven three nine two, with the date range of March first through March twenty-fifth. And that document is in your packet.
I second the motion. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Wagner? Yates states that the town engineer requested some changes to this that ran up these costs and got us to where we're at at this point. Do we have that documented in the files somewhere? I would just like to be sure that we're saving whatever is available from Hazen and Sawyer. Yates is pointing to us basically as requiring them to change and adjust something. And so shouldn't we have a document from Hazen and Sawyer? Shouldn't we be saving that just like we would an invoice pertaining to this, to this project, this contract?
Correct. If I had an invoice from Hazen and Sawyer, I would have that. I don't, I'm not exactly sure which one you're referring to. I think you may be referring to the chlorination. If that be the case, I do not have a document from Hazen and Sawyer for that. But I do have an explanation that they requested Yates to do that per state law.
Well, you know, it says several different things. Kinnon didn't take into account some existing infrastructure that was discovered, and there was no choice but to work around that. That would either be on us or Kinnon. I got that. The engineer didn't want to flush lines with dechlorination and testing for no chlorine residual of lines before flushing. I thought the issue was that we couldn't start flushing lines that were already in service, going back up the line to the next cutoff and take those folks out of service. The issue became, Kinnon did not engineer in two eight-inch valves that would have allowed us to isolate the new main and flush it and chlorinated. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay. And so these things are going to happen. I'm, you know, as Mr. Foy pointed out, as a percentage of the total contract, it's uncomfortable, but not, not, you know, we can absorb that, not the end of the world. It's just a, an opportunity for us all to do better next time with everybody involved, so we don't have a change order in the first place. But just for council's information, I looked up a valve just before this meeting. And at Backflow Parts USA, there's an eight-inch gate valve available for eighteen twenty-seven. And we're paying fifty-seven hundred for one installed, times two. And I'm not going to contend that that's exactly the same valve, but the one I looked up was for municipal water service. So, you know, the point I would make is we need to do anything we can do in the future to try and head off these problems, so we don't have change orders whenever possible. I think Yates handled this well, from what I understand. The feedback I got from Aaron Bepson and Hazen and Sawyer was positive. And it's just one of those things, everything looks good on paper until you get out in the field and have to deal with site conditions and the weather and everything else. But this is just unfortunate. And at the end of the day, it's still public money. It's still money that was taken from our citizens. So we need to always be conscious of trying to minimize change orders.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. I'll take the vote. Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And I am also aye. We're skipping over seventeen, number eight, I'm sorry.
I would just like to say, and this is just a compliment to Yates Construction. I bypass that section every day because I live, you know, off Ellisboro Road in Rockingham County. Every day, they did an amazing job because a lot of times you see those construction going on on the side of the road like that. They've got mud all over the road. They've got a disaster. It was horrible. It is normally horrible. Those guys did an amazing job. They were very clean. They kept things off the road. They, they made sure everything was, I just wanted to give a compliment to them. I think they did a great job. And I just wanted to say that.
Very good.
I pass it every single day.
They make it look easy when we know it's not.
Not, right, right, because they, you know, you go by there and you see them in the ground up to here. And so they're definitely digging and things like that. But I just wanted to make that, you know, give them that compliment. They did a great job.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Consideration of an amendment to lawn and grounds maintenance contract. Mr. Landrith, I believe you have this.
Yeah, you know, we talked about doing a three-year contract with Excellence, and we couldn't come to terms. But we did a one, and they got a slight increase. But they've come back to us and they'd like to do the other two years. So I think it would be good for us to do that because we'd lock in with no increases for two more additional years. So I would like to make a motion. See, I lost my, lost my page. That we extend the contract with Excellence Lawn Care. Fingers aren't working.
You want to extend it to March twenty, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight?
Yep. That's right.
Is that your motion?
For two, yeah, for two additional years. Be no, no cost increase other than what we're doing now.
And the cost will be thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars per year, payable in twelve monthly installments.
There you go.
You got it.
Good job.
Mr. Winfrey, did you review this extension contract for us?
Yes, sir, I did. And it appears to be, to me, it appears to be in order. And and I think that maybe, maybe the motion says the proposed amendment in your packet, maybe the amendment, maybe simplify the motion might just be just to authorize the mayor to execute this.
That's where I was headed. Good.
At half of the, of the council. It's number eighteen.
I don't know if it's appropriate, but I'll second the motion with the amendment that the mayor be authorized to sign the contract.
Okay.
Am I out of line, am I out of line making the motion for myself? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Foy?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
I am aye.
And I am also aye.
Oh, yeah.
Item number nineteen, discussion of the Town of Stokesdale Solicitation Policy. That's mine. I requested this some meetings ago, and thanks to Mr. Wagner, he was able to put together something for us. And he has it basically in just a memorandum. It's a draft form. It does need tweaking on several things. I think Mr. Foy has pointed out several things that he'd like to see changed one way or another. And my intent, I was approached by one of the local citizens who has a, what do you, what do I call it? Has a religious connection that wanted to post something to advertise joining the organization. And because of the lack of policy, we basically ended up refusing it after I discussed this with at least one other council member, maybe two. We just don't, we didn't have any allowance for it. We're in the process right now of trying to repair this bulletin board in our park, which may facilitate some of these things in the future, but that remains to be seen. The basic idea of the non-solicitation is, of course, we want to keep anyone from begging, if you will. But also, we want to be able to control whatever is appropriate to be handed out, to be distributed. If there's someone requesting a donation, then we need to control that rather than it just happening haphazardly. This is the draft. My suggestion to you would be, please read through it. I'd like to discuss it further, and I would like to adopt something in the way of a a no solicitation policy. We will have to make some exceptions at different times on different things, but I think that can be included in the policy.
Where's the date?
It's, you had, you should have it loose. Do you know it? Was I the only one given one, or do I have them all? Oh, that'd be the reason you don't have one. Sorry, folks.
And I'll just elaborate while he's passing those out. Again, these are a, this is a very rough draft of a solicitation policy. It was done very widely and with the intention that council would bring it back in. I have spoke with this with Mr. Winfrey, and he has some, some concerns that he would like to address about it. So I think, like I said in my email, I think it's good to let Chuck have a say in it as well, and but ultimately let council make the decision.
Is this just for town property?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not attempting to restrict the businesses in any way, just, just for the town properties. Primarily the park is my concern, the town, the park and the town hall, of course. That's it. That was, that was the amount of discussion. It doesn't require a vote. Be glad to move on to the next item unless you want to discuss this in any detail. I think we ought to have it maybe added to the May agenda for further discussion. And I'll get with you, Mr. Wagner, and see if we can't refine it a bit.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may.
If you must.
Well, if I may, Mayor, you run a meeting. If you recognize me, I've got something I'd like to add to this. I think it's important to maybe emphasize, I wouldn't mind if it was put in bold print, that this solicitation on property owned or leased by the Town of Stokesdale. Just so a citizen frustrated with door-to-door salesmen out there doesn't see this at some point and think it applies to their property and we get into policing that and so forth. It's clear to me when I read it, but.
Okay. Well, it's worth making.
If you look at it, Town of Stokesdale Solicitation Policy, it would be easy to leap to the conclusion that it applies to private property.
Okay. Very good. That's.
I'm going to approve petitioning.
Yeah.
Or protest within the bounds of town.
That seems like a First Amendment violation right there.
Yeah, that was my concern. I was briefly shared with Robbie.
What is, was it, tell me, tell me what, what's the question? I didn't get that.
I mean, you know, people are supposed to be able to petition here.
Or protest the government.
Protest.
If they want to come outside and hold signs, then.
Well, for example, earlier tonight.
The First Amendment.
Earlier tonight, you invited people to come in and speak, and certainly during political season, people come in and speak from the floor about, you know, political issues.
I mean, they can't disrupt a meeting. There's laws against that.
No, that's right.
What problem are we trying to solve?
Really, what we're trying to do is we're trying to allow for the request that I had in some way, if it's at all possible. In a nutshell, it boils down to trying to recruit for a church choir. And that was all the, the notice was for. But in talking with the, the other council members, I think it was Mr. Rigsby I spoke with, to me, if we open the door for something like this, it just, it does just that. It opens the door.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak again?
You may.
First of all, I'd like to protest Mr. Foy's comment. That is my line.
It is your line, Tim.
What's the problem we're trying to solve? I only have a few of these, and you're taking that away from me.
Buddy, I should have given you credit for it. I've used it one other time in this meeting, and I gave you credit for it.
I won't attribute.
Mr. Wagner, please.
That credit was to extend in perpetuity, my friend.
Mr. Wagner, please footnote that in the minutes that due credit goes to Mr. Jones.
Is any urgency on this? I was just handing this.
No, that's what I'm saying. No, there's not.
I'd like to reflect upon it and.
Exactly.
And I think I'm like Mr. Winfrey. I'm going to make sure we're not intruding on anybody's First Amendment rights.
I'm opening it up to, Mr. Winfrey, do you have a copy?
Yeah, I do, yes.
Okay. Again, I'd like everybody just to take a look. Give me some ideas on it. I, when I was a army of one, I'm the one who made these kinds of decisions. But now I'm an army of at least five, so, or four others. So any input that you might have on it would be great. And if it's not necessary, the fewer regulations we have to impose, the better, as far as I am concerned. Live and let live.
Well, the other thing that I briefly discussed with Mr. Wagner was this idea of the town administrator deciding which speech was allowed and which speech was not allowed. That's.
No, 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 I didn't. That's not in there. No, what it's saying, it shouldn't say that. What it's saying is a request would be submitted, and I would take that to council. At no point do I have any authority in this process. I am simply the receiver of requests.
After formal action.
Chuck, if you would recall the job description of young Mr. Wagner, we had five pages of things he can't do.
Right, right. Well, but even, even so, even allowing the town council to figure out what's allowed, what's not allowed.
Understood.
That's.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah.
So, wait a minute.
So the problem, the issue was somebody wanted to hand out some pamphlets at a soccer game or something?
Just wanted to post into the, in the park or on the, or on the town hall, in the town hall, the fact that they were trying to enlist additional members for their choir. We invited them to bring whatever they have to the town hall. And Mr. Wagner and I agreed that we would do what we could because we have other things that are posted inside the town hall. We don't have a problem with that. This is what's prompted me to try to fix this bulletin board down here in the park because I think it could be a central point. When I was in business, it was always, you know, why don't you have a bulletin board on the outside of your building? Well, one, I can't control what's on it, so.
If you're going to do a bulletin board, you're not going to be able to decide who gets to put what up.
Yes, I am, because I'm going to have it under locking keys, which is.
Well, no, you're not. I mean, you're not going to be able to say this church can do it and this guy can't do it.
Exactly. That's my point. That's my whole point. That's why I say.
Bulletin board for official town use, don't we?
Yeah.
That's the only answer we can give here.
Okay, that's fine. But again, if we're solicited by Girl Scout group, are we going to deny a Girl Scout group that wants to post cookie sales?
We will if we, if we do everybody else.
Yeah, that's the whole thing. I mean.
That's what I'm saying. You can't, you can't pick and choose.
I agree. I agree. If you open the door to this, that's why we stop the other.
What they could have done, they could come in here for three minutes and get on TV and do that, you know, and say something during a meeting. They got time to do that.
All right.
But I'm just saying, if you, you can't.
Well, I'm back to my point. If it's not needed, if it's not, if I'm, if I'm shooting in the dark here, or just whistling in the dark, then let's stop it. I won't go any further.
It's getting late. Let's ponder this one if it's okay.
We're not going to, we're not going to finish this tonight. I'm, I'm ready to move on.
Okay.
All right.
I want to see what you're saying.
Okay.
Just think about it.
Can we put it on the May agenda just for, we'll make a final discussion. I'll get with you.
But tell them to come in and speak and say that they're trying to find somebody.
I can do that when we have that individual situation. What I want to do is I want to address whether we need the policy or not. Do we need the policy? Do we need a policy, a solicitation policy?
We don't need one that's not easily enforceable, that's not clear, and we don't need one that violates the First Amendment.
Imagine that. Imagine that. Yes.
And I don't know why we.
That's right. All I've asked Mr. Wagner to do was to search what's there in the marketplace. He did just that, and he's made a compilation of those in this particular document. Good, bad, or indifferent, legal or illegal, that's all it is, is a draft idea. So that we might, again, have something to talk about. But take a look at it again, if you would. Take a look at it, and let's discuss it in May a little further. And if you want to, if you want to stop it, there's, I have no problem with it. I really don't have any, I don't have any, any dog in a race.
You've got a right to put it forward, Mr. Mayor. Nobody's, you've got a right to put it forward. That's no, nobody wants to stop you from putting it forward by no means.
That's fine. That's fine.
You know?
Okay.
We'll look at it.
Next item. Discussion of the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, P T R C. Mr. Foy, I believe you have this.
So, since we've had planning and zoning in the Town of Stokesdale, or Guilford County has provided that service, and we pay Guilford County for that service. I think for the most part, it has gone well. As the town's growing, I do not shy away from my opinion that I would like to see an employee for the Town of Stokesdale, a planner, that purports to the Town of Stokesdale and answers to this town council. I also know the economics of that is not viable, so I will share that opinion with you. I'm not putting that forward. Knowing the workload of the Planning Department at Guilford County, and coupled with the fact that we do play second fiddle to Guilford County business. An example of that is tonight, we had two public hearings, you know, that were paid for by the applicants. We were not able to deliver the public hearing because the, you know, unfortunately, some things were missed. And the explanation provided for, for those misses was that Guilford County was busy planning for the Guilford County meeting. So unfortunately, you know, things fell by the wayside. I'm pleased to see we have a special call meeting, so the Town of Stokesdale, you know, is responsible in a way over the services we provide, directly or indirectly. And we're making it right by having this special call meeting on April twenty-first. But I just want to make council aware that the Piedmont Triad Regional Council offers planning and zoning administration. It does not include code enforcement. But they do, they do, they offer this service for the Town of Sweptsville, Yanceville, Jonesville, and Dobson.
Did you know the particulars of the how much and all?
Yeah, so, so I'm at the infancy stage of researching this. And I guess the objective of talking about this tonight is to kind of gauge your level of comfort as a council on potentially, you know, making a change, you know. I would, I would entertain the idea of a change, but as with any change, it's a risk, you know. I don't know the cost of it yet. But I've got a meeting tomorrow with the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, you know, I'm going to learn more. And, you know, I guess before I really put my time into it and do a proper proposal to the town council. uh, proposal to the town council, uh, just, you know, ju- just shoot, shoot it straight with me, what, what is your comfort level with potentially changing the way we do things now?
What's our, what's our risk in, in losing the current planning, uh, operations that we have? If we, if we switch to Piedmont?
It's a great question.
Can we back up?
In my opinion, probably not. Uh, you know, and if we did back up, it would be under the terms of a new interlocal agreement, and if I were them, I would charge us a lot more, but, uh.
Don't say that too loud.
I just said it here.
If, if you're, uh, you know, my opinion is for as long as we can utilize what we got under the current contract, that, that we, I, I wanna stick with that. E- even if we had our own in-house folks, that doesn't mean we can't have a hiccup, we're all human, including our staff, and, uh, the same thing could have occurred for one reason or another.
You're right, I, I guess what, uh, the explanation provided, the mistake itself, my, my goodness, we're all humans, mistakes happen unfortunately, but, you know, that's, that's what makes us humans, it's the, it's, it's what happened after the mistake and the explanation provided. I was too busy preparing for the Guilford County meeting and, you know, that's, that was the worst and, uh.
You know, I.
I gravitated to that, I was like, oh.
I got, there, there's, as I understand it, there's kind of a shortage of, there, there's more demand than there is supply for planners, so that would mean a pretty big budget outlay for actually, actually take care of this, get one or PTRC to provide one to us, uh, you know, that's a concern. And I, from what I understand, the town of Summerfield just recently hired one and their, their budget line item for that's a hundred thousand dollars a year. When it comes down to it, we really don't have that many, many cases, but planners, you gotta love them, but they're always, they, they get a, in, in my opinion, they get carried away, uh, they just, there's, it, it, they love to do what they do, the, 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 the planning ordinances become more complex every year and then things roll down from Raleigh just like they are now that we're dealing with, and we just got word this week that they were planning even more changes to one sixty D.
You're correct.
And, and, you know, I'm like wanting to pull my hair out here, we're having to pay for all this stuff and deal with it.
There's a new House bill that really would change the.
Yeah, yeah, so, um.
And I wanna be clear to say that I'm pleased with Guilford County's services, but in the black and white, knowing they're, they're allegedly overworked too, I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering where the town of Stokesdale is gonna fit in this puzzle as we continue to move on.
Well.
Th- th- this is not about an error, this is about, I made the error because, uh, the town of Stokesdale was essentially put to the side because they were busy with Guilford County planning, and I get it, they're the ones that sign their checks, I understand it, so I'm wondering, you know, uh.
We're, we're one percent of the county's population, we're a small operation here, I mean, we, we need a, in my mind's eye, we need about an eighth of a planner, um, you know, we, I, I just, a third of a planner at the most, but may, maybe if the wheels come off, we could figure out a way to share a planner with a couple of other towns maybe, but, uh, it's just always gonna be a moving target because, you know, as soon as we get a planner, we like them, they like us, you know, they're, you know, the, the guy's wife will get another job in another state and we'll be back to square one, I mean, we're just always gonna have to deal with being the small little town we are, and so, um, I, I just, I'm, I'm.
So ju- just to clarify, though I did share my opinion that I would, you know, potentially be in favor of hiring a planner as a staff or a town of Stokesdale employee, I've also acknowledged that I don't see an economical path to get there. So, the Piedmont Triad Regional Council is another organization that would offer zoning and administrative services for the town, and I'm in no way, shape, or form even ready, I might do my research and say thi- this is not the right fit.
Well, I.
But, um, right now, and, and I appreciate you sharing with me, but right now, that's what I want, is, is your comfort level to, to potentially change.
Well, well, maybe we could look at it like we do the fire extinguishers in the building, you know, in case a fire break glass, we, you, you, you could do the preliminaries and we would have, have something to fall back on, if it was needed, it'd be good, you know, it'd be good to know, uh, that's just my opinion.
My suggestion is have the meeting, have the meeting, bring back to us, uh, what it, what it has, and, uh, are you, are you on this, are you going on this on your own, by yourself?
My intent is not to tie up other resources at this time, uh, for something, i- i- if this thing grows legs and, uh, it becomes what I believe to be a viable option, uh, then you'll know.
Okay.
Bobby will know, uh, but it's, it, I, I don't wanna put a bunch of legwork into it if, if, uh.
Is, is there a benefit to dealing with the county in the sense that when we need other things and communications with the county, is, is that a kind of a segue into that, uh, having, having them providing our contract planner, is, is that helping us in that direction?
Uh, you know, certainly we're, we're closely interlinked with the county, you know, they provide animal control services as well, uh. Again, there, there, I, I do not have an issue with anybody in their planning department, it's just, it's just simply kind of just some observations that I made, uh, you know, you know, of where we stand now, you know, what potentially could lie ahead in the future, and, uh, a- a- and, you know, we got the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, we've only recently started to engage their services, uh. You know, this gentleman Jesse Day has provided the recommendations, so it, it's an alternate, it's an alternate outlet, and that's, uh.
Yeah, I know.
I, I can't say that I want to do this, I, I can, I can say that, uh, if council is open to the change, I will, uh, I'll go down the road of, you know, putting it together in a proposal, but, uh, I, I, I could also, you know, I could also make the argument of not changing, but, uh, I, I just don't know h- h- how, is, i- in the event they get, you know, more cases from the town of Stokesdale.
Well, if the county, if the city keeps expanding out into the county, the county ought to have more and more people free because there'd be less county to work in.
So.
Tell that to the commissioners.
So, yeah, I mean.
Well, I'll tell you the way I see it, that, you know, the gentleman made a mistake, he ma- he may or may not be there next month.
You're talking about Avery, you're talking about that current plan?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not putting the name on anything, I'm just saying that.
You're right.
You know, it, it was a mistake made, it could have been our guys that made it, I mean, that they didn't, but, um, therefore I, you know, I don't, um, I don't put a lot of weight on that because, like I said, that could change and you could get, you could get better, you could get worse, um, not to say that, that he's doing a bad job or anything, he just, he made, he made an honest mistake.
Do it.
And, uh, and I don't wanna hammer in on that at all, we, um, I feel like we get a good, we get a good price in, in what we do, you know, we don't have a lot of zoning cases, they do do our, um, um, yeah, code enforcement, um, and that's something if we, we go away from them, it, it, you know, I mean, we don't have a lot, we do it on, on a, you know, on-call thing, it's not, not a whole lot done, um, but you wouldn't have any, anything then if, if something major came up, so, I mean, I, I'm open to look at anything, um, and I'll never say a hundred percent that I wouldn't, but I would lean not going that way, but of course, if you had a meeting and it was something and, you know, um, I don't wanna bring the Gestapo in here, um, and I know that's just a planning, but you still have that and sometimes you have, sometimes you do need the code enforcement for, for things.
Sure, sure, and that would, that would need to be vetted out as well.
So, and if you wanted to look at it and, and just get a, you know, rough idea of where we would go, where we could go, it's nothing wrong with having that in our back pocket, but it would be, it'd be kinda hard for me to go with that unless, I mean, it could, you know, maybe there's a miracle, they're just charging by the case and.
Yeah.
There's no upfront or something and, you know, I mean, there could be a scenario that I would, um, it would be pretty tough for it to be.
And that's fair, and, and I appreciate, uh, this feedback, and I, and I wanna echo, uh, your thoughts, that I'm generally pleased, you know, with it, but sir, I, it's, it, things that I'm observing, you know, lots of staff changeover, uh, you, you know, we've had three different planners in, in, in the last year, uh, and just the fact that, you know, w- w- we're a fly on our elephant's rear end when it comes to, uh, you know, just where we, Guilford County's the, the big guy and we're, we're the elephant, yet we have a lot of requirements to take up a lot of, you know, you know.
But we would be with these people too.
Mr. Foy, maybe there's an opportunity here to work on a checklist or something and have our very own staff, our intrepid staff, kinda do a little bit more monitoring as these things walk their way through Guilford County planning, just to, you know, kinda be a little proactive and like, hey, have you got this done yet? You've got that done, then let me check that off my list, you know, just, and, and maybe, maybe that's something we got control over and something we could do.
It, it, it is, and, and, you know, there's alw- hey, there's always an opportunity for all of us to be better. I, I did make the comment, I think it was in the last meeting, that, uh, uh, just because some of the gaps that I observed, that I just made a comment that, uh, to encourage the communication between the Guilford County Planner and Robbie to avoid some of these gaps.
I, I think our staff is already unofficially kinda doing some of that, but, um, we're, we're in an awful small town, you know, we, we have now three people in the audience in our, in our meeting here, we could, I mean, we're just a small town.
Well, like I said, if you wanna look at it, I, I hate if you spend a lot of time on it, unless you see, I mean, you may, you may get in here for this initial meeting and you see, and it may be roses, um, and if it is, you know, but, but I just don't know how it would be.
A- a- and I appreciate, Jimmy, you don't know how much I appreciate that, just, we're having open dialogue about this, and, uh, I don't know the answer, and I acknowledge that I could do all the research in the world and come to the conclusion that the best option that we, that best economically viable option that we have is what we've been doing for the last thirty years, and, and I would not hesitate to say that, but, uh, you know, th- there, there are some, you know, things that make me, you know, want, want to explore other options.
You know, and, and you talk about in-house, the only way I could see in-house is somebody like Mason, being able to do it and give him extra ten hours a week or something, uh, y- you know, I, I don't wanna, I don't even really wanna do something like that, but, you know, there'd be time for somebody that was part-time to go full-time that could do that, could do that job or something, you know?
So, so I would offer, I, I agree that, uh.
But I don't wanna, I'm not wanting to look at it.
I would offer that it's, it's likely not a forty-hour position, but, uh.
No. Now, I know two guys.
Right. Well.
Go to your, go to your meeting and let us know, do you need any, do you need a, need someone else to go with you?
No, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue my meeting, but th- this conversation will help me, uh, determine how far I really wanna dive into this, uh.
Well.
If I could, if I see value in it, I'm gonna keep diving.
My question is, how big is their, how big's their planning staff? You know, do they have, do they have half a dozen people on their planning staff?
They, they, they have multiple people on the planning staff and.
And you've already said that, that towns that are using them, they're, I mean, they're comparable in, in size, you've got Dobson, Yanceville.
They're comparable, they provided, uh, very positive feedback with their experience.
Yeah, but they're, they're, they're probably not growing anywhere near like we are.
Well, Mr. Mayor, it's like asking a barber if you need a haircut.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
Business they in, and of course you need planning services.
Right.
Okay.
Well, if you wanna pursue it, look at it, ask your, your individual councilman, and I don't, you know, I don't think we have to have our blessing to do it, and you put, if you see, if you see there's somewhere to go with it, then you can put it forward to us.
Yeah, I, I, I'm certainly willing to listen to anything you got to say about it, I'll echo that as well.
Yeah.
I'm with you, I'm with you there. Let's move along.
Are you through, Derek?
Anything else?
Oh, yes, sir, I'm through.
Public comments, I'd like to limit it to three minutes per speaker. Anyone like to speak?
Sheriff, you got anything else for us?
Michael? Michael, you got something? Michael, if you would just identify yourself.
Michael Logan, fifty-two oh-two, Rambling Road, I won't say Greensboro.
How you doing, Michael?
Doing good, um, as your Stokesdale precinct representative for the Republican Party, I'd like to invite, invite Republicans within the precinct out to our general membership meeting, it is at our new headquarters, and that will be on April fourteenth, uh, coming up the next month. I really would like to get people to come out to the Lincoln Reagan Trump Dinner, and that will be at the Corey Convention Center, and that is on May eighteenth. If businesses would like to sponsor, we'd love to have you money, because the money that they spend with the Republican Party is what helps get Republicans elected for office, um, and it furthers our cause within Guilford County. And that's all I have, and I will, well, I will say, I did attend school board meeting, I do still show up, those public speakers and comments within the board meeting, there's expectation and the willingness within Guilford County to raise your property taxes.
No.
Yes, there is, uh, a number of speakers did come out, and the one, only solution anybody offered and provided was raise property taxes.
Mm, mm, mm.
I'm pretty sure that's a sore thumb out here, but.
Well, it's, it, it's a unique perspective, given, you know, how mu- I, I just always found it interesting how much, uh, higher the Guilford County tax rate is when you compare it to Wake or Mecklenburg or, you know, Forsyth.
Um, much higher in Guilford County. I will say, there is gonna be a county commissioners meeting, the closest one was gonna be at Claxton Elementary, and it had been canceled, and hopefully it will be rescheduled on the twenty-second or twenty-third of April.
And that was the one for the thirty-first?
Yeah, uh, it was canceled, and I'll be honest, come out to Claxton and you can see how three hundred bill, or, the three hundred million was spent at the beginning, because that was the first school that was built with the bond money, and it does give you a really unique perspective of how it was spent and what it was spent on, so.
So, that's the new, that's the new Claxton, this meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
It opened up this, it was the first school built with the bond money and completed, so.
Was that the first phase of the bond money?
Yes.
And is that all, is Claxton off of, off of Groom Town?
Uh, no, it's off of West Ridge, no, it's off West Ridge, but I think it's Pine.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
Pine Top, I believe that's.
High Top, not, or Hilltop, not Hill, is it? High Top, not Hilltop, okay.
Okay, that's all I have.
Maybe we need to get Dodge in here, Dodge or whatever it is.
And I did, I will say, I did talk to Virginia Fox Knight, she was at Northwest Republican Women's Club, and I tried to get her to come out here, but she had just got off the airplane, came out and spoke there, but she did say that she would come out the one year.
Great, Michael, thank you.
Trying to get as many people out here as can.
We appreciate it.
Y'all need some people sitting in this audience.
Tell her we got plenty of room.
We'll get her to bring a suitcase of money, don't we?
I tell you what, as far as con- people in Congress, I think she's a good one.
Do you?
I think she's pretty fair and pretty, I don't think she's making money off of it, so.
Mike, I appreciate you, everything you do, buddy.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, uh, council comments, Mr. Foy?
Uh, hmm. Used to Jim going before me here, I'm, I'm not too quick on my feet.
Okay, Mr. Landrith, would you like to speak first?
No, I'm just, I, 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 I'm just kidding, uh, want, wanna thank my colleagues for the, for the spirited discussion tonight, uh, I always thank staff, three citizens, uh, attending tonight, Mr. Winfrey, thank you, uh, spring breaks next week for the kiddos, just hope everybody, uh, has a, has a good and safe spring break and, uh, and happy Easter, so, thank you.
Mr. Landrith?
Of course, I wanna thank staff and Priscilla, if you're out there, I wanna thank you, she said something to me today about that, and of course, we had good dialogue night with, uh, with council, uh, it's, it's great to be somewhere like this where you can, you know, a lot of places you see a bunch of stuffed shirts, I watch them on TV all the time, and, uh, we get, we get to have a good conversation. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here, and my ride, my wife. Y'all would think I had lost my license or something, but I haven't. She probably just took it away from you, is what we were thinking. But, uh, it's, it's, it's great, it's great to, uh, it's great to be in a, a town like Stokesdale. I, I hope it survives a while. I know there's plenty of people pushing on all sides that tear it up. So let's try to keep it going as long as we can.
Mr. Mayor, I, I forgot something.
Uh, excuse me, let me, let me back up, you may, please.
Hey, that's him. Patty.
Oh, yeah.
Forgot to give you a big shout out. It's good, good to have you back. Thank you for staying, continuing to stay involved in the community and, uh, and congratulations on your new endeavor. And, uh, welcome back. Come back and see us. Yes, ma'am.
I hope, I hope she don't have some undercover store she's working on. When I seen her, I thought, oh, Lord, what we got. I'm done. Uh, yeah.
There you go.
Great, great. Mr. Jones.
Well, I'd just like to extend an invitation out there if there's any citizen, uh, interested in how the town's, town's money is spent. Maybe get with me and there's two of us, we could talk about pre-yale certifications and the modified accrual accounting and, and what have you. But, uh, I, I'd just like to assure you that, that we're all watching the money. Our, our disagreement is a, a procedural functional sort of thing. Uh, I certainly don't think there's any monies being spent that's, uh, being absconded with, so I want to make that clear. I'd like to extend a thank you to our three citizens in the audience, especially to, uh, Sam Page and, and thank him for running for office. Maybe if he keeps coming to our meetings, Senator Berger will come and sit on the other side and at least we'll have our bases covered. One, one of them will, uh, probably be our next state senator when the next election cycle rolls around. So, uh, thank you for being here and, uh, you know, thank you to my town, fellow town council members, town attorney, town staff. So, and happy Easter.
We can have a debate three minutes at a time.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening and Patty, welcome. You're welcome anytime. Please come back. Thank you for the work you've done, Kim. And Mr. Wagner, thank you very much. We are, right now are, I make a motion for this Stokesdale Town Council to enter into a closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three one eight dot one, one-one, A three-four. The purposes of the closed session are to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege hereby acknowledged, which privilege is hereby acknowledged, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including the agreement on a tentative list of economic developments incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations. We will, uh, that's my motion.
We need one other permitted, uh, reason to, uh, to consult with the attorney for attorney-client privilege?
And that is?
Okay, my bad. Okay.
Did I cover it?
Got it, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about that.
No problem. You know I'm new at this. Um. I have a motion.
You have a second, my friend.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Landrith?
Yeah, aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Aye, and I am aye.
Oh, God, we're going to have to start having a stretch break.
I gotta go get some cap food now.
Always a pleasure. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming. It's a great show.
Well, I was, I, I had my fingers crossed and I thought, I was about, I was drawn between the two meetings and I thought, well. She is a winner. I agree with you. Yeah.
She's sharp.
She'll perfect it.
And she's well, she's so well respected. She's so.
All right, I will make a motion to reconvene in open session.
Second.
Then adjourn the meeting.
Second.
After announcements.
Go ahead, what kind, sir?
All right, everybody, aye aye.
Aye.
We're good? Okay. Announcement, April 18th, the April 18th, 2025, the town hall will be closed, that's for Good Friday. April 21st, 2025, special call town council meeting at 7:00 PM. April 24th, the regular town planning board meeting has been canceled. May 6th, 2025, special call town council meeting, budget workshop, that has been canceled at this point. The 5-8, 508, 2025, regular town council meeting at 7:00 PM, that is on. Have a motion to adjourn?
We've already voted for that, so good night, folks.
We did? Okay, all right, good night. Thank you all.
Gentlemen, have a great weekend.
Well, you enjoy your time, is it next week you're going?
Be safe out there.
Where are you headed?
Head up to Bannerett.
You get pretty good at timing it.
Need me badly, huh?
Where are you going to Bannerett?